Again, thank you everyone for coming out and attending the meeting today. We do, since our last meeting, have a new board member who's with us now, Mark Wiley. And Mark, would you introduce yourself?
Well, several of you I know, because I was on previously. I'm the District 87 rep. I stepped off for a few years when I was in leadership at 87. And now that Dr. Erwin Low is our incoming president, probably, he talked to me about re-assessing, coming back and being with you all. So I'm pleased and honored to be back.
Good. Welcome back again. Moving on to public comment, we do not have any comments.
We don't.
All right. And now on to the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. The minutes from our last meeting, financial reports, and also the staff reports from the Regional Planning Commission. Are there any items or questions about any of the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Salute.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same son. We're now on to the regional housing initiatives. And Luke, I understand you're going to provide that to us from your remote location.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. So I will be presenting to you the regional housing initiative updates. Under local updates, we hosted the regional housing initiative staff committee meeting on January 16, which was a few weeks ago. For the 2025-2029 consolidated plan for the city, we have incorporated the updates for the city's draft consolidated plan in time for their notice of public hearing and public comment period. Their draft consolidated plan was posted on the city's website. A public hearing gathering the comments for the consolidated plan will also be held on February 10 during the city's regular city council meeting. Written public comments are also being gathered for the consolidated plan. For the town, we had submitted the revisions for the analysis of impediments and needs assessment chapters. And we are also currently working on the market analysis chapter. We've also submitted the third quarter report for the CDBG for the town of Normal. Moving on to the regional housing recovery plan updates. For the RICE implementation award, it's still pending. However, the CEO told us yesterday that the grant awards should be made this quarter. And moving on to other updates, we've attended a meeting on missing middle housing scan together with this, hosted by the city of Normal, together with their consultant. Those are all the updates that I have on my end. Do we have any questions regarding these?
Questions for me? Thank you very much, Luke. Appreciate your efforts on this. Now, Jennifer, the human services education plan update.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So an update in our work as coordinating agency for the Region 6 Human Services Transportation Plan. An agreement we have directly with IDOT. We are currently working with IDOT to clear up some inconsistencies in their records of our activities for Region 6. Things have gotten lost apparently, but we're filling them in. And so we expect that grouping up very soon. And we are continuing contact with the counties outside of McLean, other than McLean in Region 6. That will be continuing with Showbus is their rural transit provider. And they are continuing attempts to coordinate as a single grantee with IDOT starting in July, essentially. And we're hoping to have some answers on the resolution of that approach so that we can continue to work with them and move them forward. And we'll be asking specifically for participation by both board members or the adjutantes and representatives of the service providers in those counties to be part of our Region 6 joint committees of policy and technical assistance. We'll be also providing the county board members, possibly all of them, but certainly the chairs and the transportation committees or equivalents, all of whom are new basically since the election, with an introduction to the HSTP program, why we have it, why we're part of it, and also our role as a coordinating agency. And also, again, reemphasizing that in order to derive the benefits from the grants that are available, they have to participate in this process. I would be nicer about it than that, but that's the idea. And that's it. If anyone has questions, I think I can answer them.
Any movement on Showbus and what McLean County is going to be doing?
We don't know. Showbus is working with the three counties who are inside, were part of the umbrella agreement that they had with McLean County and now are kind of on the road. And those are the three that are trying to put themselves together as a single entity for application and granting purposes. Don't know where that is. I am in regular contact with Roar Dick, who's the president/CEO of Showbus. And she's kind of waiting along with the rest of us. It's very difficult for us to kind of do all these contacts and talk to people when we're not sure how this is going to work. But all of them are intending to stay with Showbus, as is Kankin County. I have no idea what's going on and do it and make it, unfortunately. But fingers crossed, they're getting covered somehow and they're working well.
But from McLean County, at this point, the plan is still to look to connect transit?
As far as we know.
Yes.
We haven't had anything to suggest that they're talking to anyone else, although we're four months out, or four and a half. So presumably, they are, the county is actively seeking an agreement with both IDOT and with the new provider, whether it's Connect or somebody else. And I guess they'll tell us about it when they know. They will have to continue participating in Region 6. I'm not sure if they totally get that. But that's going to be an ongoing process, too.
But if it is not connect, who would it be?
I have the foggiest. And, you know, we haven't heard about, you know, even to the level of rumor about approaching other agencies or entities to do this. But I don't know. And it would be nice to know because it would give us some sense of what we need to do as the coordinating agency for these counties. But I would just sit back and wait now that this is resolved quickly so that we can get everyone, you know, back on track come July 1st.
Yeah, just for a second interest, I think the county is kind of still exploring with Connect Transit and working with IDOT because it's really IDOT's core in a way because they're the ones, the entity that gives out the grants. And then, but then we also understand that the Connect Transit is up to their board. And also because some jurisdiction, the surface territories right now, that Connect is not supposed to provide services outside of the city and the town boundaries. So that has to be changed, you know, to go beyond the boundary because of some of the intergovernmental agreements. So I understand the county is trying to collect, get some more data from Showbus just in terms of ridership and just get a sense of how things being, you know, how many people you serve outside or from McLean County to outside McLean County, just to get some data. But yeah, so there's a lot of yips, you know, kind of pending, hanging. So yeah, we understand the time cut is limited because only a few months. And we were informed by Showbus that whoever ended up providing that services and is for the McLean County portion, that they will make sure to notify, you know, the, at least the usual riders, you know, about the transition. So stay tuned. We will let you know. You'll probably, as time goes, because June 30th is kind of that line, if you will. We'll get you posted.
We are monitoring announcements for board meetings for Connect Transit and the regional agencies to find out if this information or this consideration has turned up. So that because those actions are predicate, as Ray mentioned, for Connect Transit to be able to serve in the rural areas. Apparently, IDOT has no problem with that, but it's the local authorities that still need to worry.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any questions? Ray, you're next up on the agenda for the Veterans Parkway Corridor project.
Okay, thank you very much. As I mentioned last time, we, not we, but the consultant working with us, we started the public engagement process. There have been two, three now, focus call meetings being held. And then we also done some outreach, you know, through and pass out flyers. And thank you for the airport and Carl letting us to, we have two staff members out there this past Monday, I guess, Monday, to have pass out flyers, you know, to passengers, travelers, employees who walk by. And also, as you know, Jim went out to the winter farmers market and the arena. So we tried to get the word out to get, ready to get people to complete the survey. The deadline for the survey is supposed to be next Monday, the 10th. We are considering working with the consultants to see if we can extend the survey to get people more opportunities to complete the survey. So far, from what I have heard, to be confirmed, we have received over 500 responses. But we would love to have more. And so, and without compromising the work progress or the whole planning process, we'll be, we've been working with the consultants to see if we can extend it for another two weeks or something. So we'll let you know especially, you know, the commission and the PSC. So we have a meeting with the consultant tomorrow on that. Another thing is the, as part of the public engagement, we are looking or working with the consultant. They're thinking of doing what they call intercept interviews along the corridor, the 10-mile corridor, meaning to maybe go to businesses or individuals along the corridor, sort of methodology to talk to people. So they're planning to do that late next week, later part of next week. Details to be worked out. Of course, it's a 10-mile corridor. It's a long corridor. Cannot talk with all businesses and individuals along the corridor, the pathway. But then I think there's, you know, students' election, just to get a good sense representation where they, you know, try to get some input from folks along the pathway. Another thing is the PSC, the Project Steering Committee, is supposed to be meeting next Friday, the 14th, Valentine's Day. And so that will be next meeting. So that's their monthly meeting. And what they plan to do is to, we will still do work out the details, but what they plan to do is to give an update on the public engagement status as well as what some of the analysis work they have started as the new phase of the project. Any questions I can answer?
Ray, do you track the demographics of who the responders are?
We have questions on the location where they live. I don't know if we get down to even like the demographics.
Yeah, we did. The survey includes a short section that asks for fairly basic information, age, things of that sort. They also ask them for locational information in a sort of nonspecific way, like the nearest intersection, so that we can map all of that and determine if there are areas of the community that we're not reaching. If there is over-concentration, and we're sort of have to see what happens with that. We've done this a number of times, this particular approach. And it's helpful to have that analysis available.
Yeah, could we maybe we get down to like sex, income, the information or questions? That's, I think that's what you.
We're trying to keep it. I'm not sure about income. And of course, all of these have the option not to answer. So in all likelihood, not it. But what we haven't learned yet is how many people are answering the locational questions and what kind of demographic profile we're looking at.
What kind, what number are you thinking you might get or you would be happy with to feel comfortable with the information that gets generated?
Considering that we're talking about, you know, 82% of the county's population is in Bloomington, Normal, and it's immediate environments, more than 500, needless to say. And, you know, we have done transportation plans where we've got more than 1,000. And so this is a relatively simple survey. It's not asking for, you know, the sun, the moon, the earth. And I'm really hoping that we can generate more interest. Thanks again to Carl for giving us a shot at his passenger traffic and seeing what we can get out of it. They have a very active, or sort of active, comment board on the website, which has its issues, but they always do. But we have less information about what kind of feedback they're getting from surveys themselves. And we hope to see more about that soon and kind of sense of what else we need to do, where else we need to go stand and, you know, annoy our fellow citizens.
Is there any thought of going to the mall?
We've talked about that. Obviously, Eastland, there's nobody there. College Hills, there's no place to go. It's really central that everybody kind of has to go past. And also, we would, you know, it's not, there's not this sort of oversight management there. So we'd have to talk to individual stores and see if we could find a location.
But a place like Target gets a lot of traffic.
Target would be like, if we're actually talking to Target about being able to look somewhere, like right outside, well, right outside the door or even inside. You know, there's a little Starbucks right inside the entrance.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Maybe something like that. I went to two of the winter farmers markets. And the second time, I was there for three hours and I talked to six people. And so it was a little discouraging. It was not a busy day there, but even so, this was last month of January. I was really hoping we'd get better reaction from the farmers market crowd in December and January, and it just did not materialize.
In terms of response rates of the last few years, the different surveys, we got in original projects, we got it from over like 700-some to like 1,200-some, your response rates, or anything above, you know, we get 500, we're okay. But if we get your 700, 800, that'll be, that'll be nice.
Well, you should consider Chick-fil-A because they don't have that. So much traffic.
Oh, my God. They are too late.
And they move it through like nobody's business.
Right.
Yeah, that's one thing, too. I mean, we don't mind going to talk to the managers. I don't know how the corporate, you know, the culture, if they would let, like organizations, that, oh, we put another file into the bag or something. But we could try. It won't matter, yeah.
I think it'd be worth at least talking to them.
I sent it out to 500 agents, real estate agents.
Wow.
I'd love to know how many respond, but it'd be right on track.
Not specifically, but, you know, if we, we're kind of hoping, you know, as I said, I went and talked to six people at the farmers market the last time. But all of them said to me, oh, I have a big network of my own, Facebook and all the rest of it, and I will definitely send this out. So I'm going to look, you know, in a couple of days, assuming I can get the information for the couple of days past that day and see if there was a little bit of a bond in response. One of the things we've realized, and this was true at the airport and it's absolutely true at the farmers market, people are there for a purpose and they don't want to stop. And the difficulty is finding a location where, you know, it's not so frenzied and people aren't determined to go do their thing and get the heck out again. And we're not quite hitting the sweet spot for that yet.
Any organizations that you represent, your parents, you have to get the word out, your school districts, I mean, you have communication with all the parents. And kids, they all use veterans that will be helpful, that thousands, I would think, between the school and others.
Yeah.
You think the folks at the Chamber of Commerce would help? Yeah, yeah, they, they're on the, Chamber is on our PSC. Yeah, so yeah, we send them and ask or request them to get a file to their network for us as well. Yeah.
Because they're vital. They're close to veterans.
Yeah.
So it matters.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
We have asked them.
Yeah.
And we've been in contact with them for other information, so they're aware.
Any other questions for Ray about the Veterans Corridor? If not, thank you very much, Ray. We now have a presentation from the Central Illinois continuum of care. Liam, I understand you're the person to do this today. You're going to carry the weight for both you and Jill.
She's got big shoes to fill.
Yeah, if I may, yeah, if I may, just a brief note.
Please.
Yeah, we originally have two presenters, but unfortunately, it's kind of under the weather. I don't know if she, I gave her the login in case you would like to join us. Is she there?
I don't think so. I did not hear.
Okay, but anyway, just to give you a little bit of background. If you recall, so you may recall, we recently had a presentation on the county's behavioral health connections, coordination, I mean. And so today is a little bit unusual. The COC, and Liam's going to talk a bit more about it. It's the continuum of care. It is like a stage, designated organization to manage, coordinate, accomplish this type issue, services for not just McLean County, but many counties outside McLean. And Liam's going to touch on that. But recently, that COC function actually just got added under the umbrella of the McLean County Center for Human Services. And used to be Path, under Path. And then it got recently relocated or transferred to be under the McLean County's Center for Human Services. The CHS, while it has the name, McLean County is not a government, it's not part of the county government structure. So it's a nonprofit by itself, but it's providing a number of meaningful, important services, social services type and others that Liam's trying to cover for John Hamlin, who's the CEO for Center for Human Services, who unfortunately cannot make it last minute. So Liam can do both.
Go first.
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Liam Wheeler. I am the coordinator for the Central Illinois Continuum of Care. I am essentially the administrator of the continuum. We service 11 counties. It's a federal program. Even our US territories and all states have been broken up into geographical regions and given basically a playbook that we, that the federal government believes that we can prevent and end homelessness in all of our communities if we follow the interim rule. So we covered DeWitt, Ford, Iroquois, Kinkiki, Livingston, Logan, Mason, McLean, Menard, Piatt, and Vermillion. It's quite an effort. Before I get into what the continuum is doing here, McLean, I'm a person with lived experience with homelessness. First experiencing homelessness when I was 17 and multiple times throughout adulthood. I have been stably housed now for six years. Also a person with lived experience with substance misuse. And I have been free from alcohol and methamphetamines for eight and a half years. Okay, so the continuum of care is designed to not do all the work for the communities, but to encourage the communities to essentially solve their own problems and give them tools and resources to get people on the same page, at the same table, to prevent and end homelessness, which is quite a daunting task for one person. So I'm going to talk, ooh, that's not my computer. I'm going to talk about the participant eligibility, the types of clients that the Continuum of Care program typically serves through our funding, which will lead into some other conversations later. Okay, so there, according to, oh, goodness gracious, how do I back up? I'm going to close this because I'm going to confuse myself. All right, so we have four categories of homelessness. Category three is something that is not approved to be served in Illinois through COC funding. Category three is unaccompanied youth under the age of 24 or families who have unaccompanied youth that are experiencing homelessness and have a very particular set of criteria. Now, these clients can be served through some components of our ESG programs and other pools of funding, but this is typically not a population that we serve. Does not mean that we don't serve unaccompanied youth or have funding for them, but there's specific classifications that go into that. So category one is literally homeless. So those individuals are going to be sleeping in a place not designed for human habitation. This means if they're living in a garage, that's not, that's not a home. If they have four walls, but they don't have electricity or running water, that also means it's not habitable. They can be living in an emergency shelter, such as Salvation Army or Home Sweet Home. Or they could be exiting an institution that they've been in for less than 90 days. This includes jails, hospitals, nursing homes, long-term psychiatric care, if they were unhoused before they went into the institution. So number two, imminent risk of homelessness. These are individuals who are at risk of losing their primary sleeping place in the next 14 days. They have no residents lined up. They will be either literally street homeless or forced into shelter. And they lack the resources or support networks. Until recently, category two is one of the least served populations in the continuum of care. Does not mean that it's not a huge problem, but we didn't have particular pools of funding that could necessarily help a lot with that with the changes in definition of homelessness with the state of Illinois that allows for a broader expansion of services and with the homeless prevention grants and a few other initiatives that have started. We've started addressing, for the first time in McLean County, this specific subpopulation. Okay, so then we have category four are individuals who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence because of federal statutes. This does not cover those who are, in terms of sex trafficking. That's an entirely different pool of funding. A lot of, there's a lot of overlap in that service demographic, however. But to qualify for the particular funding that we oversee, you have to actually experience domestic violence. So there's a lot of people and a lot of things happening. I am going to dump a lot of information very quickly to try to help you understand what we're working on. So permanent housing is defined as like having a lease or being able to own or, you know, having something that is stable without an exit date. There are some components in the COC program that allows for like transitional housing into permanent housing. However, we have some other definitions to be aware of. So we have permanent supportive housing. So this is long-term. It helps those who are chronically unhoused. May have additional disabilities or mental health diagnoses that need ongoing support. Typically, how this functions is that for the, like, the first year, an agency will pay entirely for the person's rent, supportive services, mental health, whatever they need to be successful in their housing. And then there's a drop-down process. So the next year, they might only pay 85% of the rent. And then the next year, it might be 75. There is no out day for this. So there are some individuals who will live out the rest of their lives in permanent supportive housing. Some people only need it for 10 years or two years. It is an amazing program. So rapid rehousing is more short-term. This is for individuals who have assets such as an income, who need anywhere from one to 24 months of supportive help. Typically, how it functions with the pools of funding that we have right now. Every agency does a little bit differently, but that's the thing to know. That, like, yeah, we help disperse the funding, but it's not our money. And we just strategize on how we implement it. So each agency does things a little bit differently. But most agencies in McLean that have rapid rehousing funding, such as PATH and Center for Human Services, we will pay for about three months of funding. It allows opportunities for rental incentives to landlords. It allows opportunities for rental incentives to landlords who might not be entirely too happy or thrilled to take on our clients, such as up to three months of extra payments that they would get to keep, extra deposits. So essentially, to get someone moved in for the first month, we can pay up to like six months of rent, and only three of those will actually cover rent. So it's a pretty cool process. Cannot exceed a two-year period. It has to be like a one-year, one-year lease. They do not have to have a disability to qualify permanent supportive housing. You have to have something else that bars you from being able to hold permanent housing. It is designed, rapid rehousing is designed to get someone quickly off the street and into housing as soon as possible, including wraparound services such as mental health, substance abuse, treatment, and legal services, all sorts of jazz. Most of the programs that operate with this funding might not have the capacity to do the entire wraparound services that the grants allow for, but we are building a system to come along those, alongside those agencies who have rapid rehousing to make it more efficient for our continuum, which is awesome. Okay, so transitional housing, this is temporary. So you can be in transitional housing for up to 24 months. It's with the idea that we're going to help you get services, we're going to help you get connected to resources to find stability. This is the most rare type of program in the continuum of care. I think the Hope on Fifth Project, the open in Logan County, if you're not familiar with it, amazing, they are changing the industry. They don't even realize that what they're doing, it's a one-stop shop. Every human service and medical provider in the area will have an office on site in an old nursing home that will also provide rapid rehousing, transitional housing. That's really awesome, and emergency shelter. So transitional housing is just, gives you supportive services to try to get you to a point where you can figure out what type of housing program to go into next, whether that's leaving, going to permanent housing, or permanent supportive housing, or rapid rehousing. So it's, it's like a way station, but you get to do it in an actual house. You know, it's not, it's a lease, you know, it's your, you have some sort of something, but with an end date, that's the important part. And then, of course, the COC also covers a lot of supportive services only, so street outreach, a lot of the services that are offered at PATH or the Center or Salvation Army, like the kind of services where we are not providing housing, but we're creating support to help someone become more permanently housed. So what does this mean for you guys? Because this is a lot of information. So in McLean County, we are coordinating efforts between every level of government, so, I mean, federal, right down to every town in McLean. It is the hope and goal. Human service providers such as nonprofits, the private sector, and public stakeholders. So we're trying to get everyone on the same page, working at the same table to prevent and end homelessness. It is impossible for me as one person to prevent and end homelessness in 11 counties, I can tell you that. This is the third time I have done this job, twice it was at PATH. I've never made it past seven months, because the amount of work that it takes to make this sustainable is not something that we previously had. And for the first time, we've divided roles. I now do a third of the job I used to do at PATH, and we actually have support from state and federal governments in a way that we never did to make the continuum of care healthy. So I'm pretty excited about that. Number two, we're strategizing a homeless response system. If you have a client that is currently at risk of being homeless or experiencing homelessness, getting to a start-to-finish process in McLean County is literally almost impossible unless you're working in the industry. If you're a concerned citizen that wants to help someone, good luck. There's no clear start-to-finish process. There was one in place for a long time, but the way that the funding worked and the way that it was set up was kind of a Frankenstein of a beast, and it's no longer functioning. So we're creating a homeless response system, so the moment that we identify that someone is going onto the streets, that we would then be able to move them into housing or shelter immediately. Currently, if you look at our data, our average rate of chronic homelessness in McLean County is 2.5 years. That's significantly higher than a lot of our other continuums in Illinois. Another thing that we're working on is an emergency transfer plan for domestic violence. I just learned about this in the last year and I'm very excited about it. The continuum of care is supposed to coordinate between all DV providers in all of its counties. If someone in any one of those counties does not have access to a domestic violence shelter or a safe place to flee, that instead of, emotional about this one, instead of requiring agencies to contact other agencies and find a place for them to go and find the funding to transport them and get them out of town, which is difficult to do because there's always not a lot of resources for transportation, we would institute our emergency transfer plan, and we would, as a collective counties, would transfer someone to another area where they could be safe, either in the continuum or outside of it, which is amazing. It'll be a first for all of our domestic violence providers. So we are engaging and connecting with housing developers and nonprofits, bringing those together to create affordable housing. We are working with multiple agencies. This is something that honestly, I don't know how to do, folks. I am learning from the ground up. We've got some incredible partners through the Supportive Referral Network and the Corporate Supportive Housing Agency that does the Supportive Housing Institute, if any of you have heard of that. And a lot of, we've engaged, I think, two different developers that we are trying to implement different projects with. So this is something that is much needed in our community. Very excited. I'm from Utah, but I moved to Bloomington to get clean off of methamphetamines. Stayed here for almost eight years, but could no longer afford to live in McLean County. So I left. I actually do not live in my continuum area because capital was way cheaper than Bloomington. So it's something that I'm passionate about because I would like to come back to my town. So we're also working on advocacy for fair and equitable housing. As I talked about earlier, you saw our definitions of homelessness and who we primarily serve through our funding. However, if we are going to end homelessness, we have to prevent homelessness. There is a housing crisis in almost every single county within our continuum. Livingston, I talked with one of their providers recently, and they said, even if we had funding for homeless services, there are no homes for people to move into. Ford is also having the same problem. We're having the same problem in Bloomington. That even with copious amounts of funding, what is available for individuals who are reintegrating back into permanent housing, that the housing is just too expensive. So we also believe that equal access to housing is important. It's great to have good housing. We would like everyone to be able to find something within their price bracket that is not a slumlord. That is our hope and goal. So we are also working on a lot of inter-county cooperation. So there is a lot of emphasis and focus on things to go well in McLean County. And there's a lot of things that you literally cannot do by yourself. You have 11 other counties with resources and opportunities, and the structure of when the COC is fully healthy and fully functioning can provide a lot of support so that an effort that is maybe specific to McLean County has additional resources from outside. And also, the way that our funding works, it's through the lens of regional equity. So yes, like the Center for Human Services where I work has rapid rehousing funding and permanent supportive housing funding, but that is not exclusive to just use for us, that's for all 11 counties. It is our goal to make sure that every county has access to services. Before I took over the COC, we had three counties with designated homeless service providers. That meant that eight of our counties had no access to housing, did not know that the continuum existed, did not know that there was help, did not know that there was a federal program trying to get funding into their communities. We have historically granted some great agencies money to do things, and they're doing things well. However, it's, it's a regional thing. It's not just McLean County. So although there's a little nervousness as we say we're giving up money from McLean, you know, we want to keep it here, we want to keep our people employed, we want to make sure that our individuals who are experiencing homelessness are served first, that by helping and supporting the other counties around us, we can actually end it more quickly and have a more stable system. And of course, obviously, in McLean County, the efforts that I do through the point-in-time count, through the way that we engage and incorporate every service board, so if there is an agency that's providing some sort of help to someone and they're not a part of the continuum, that means that we can't formally recognize them on a grant application, which means we might get less funding. It's as simple as, you know, like having our relationship with the ROE, or, you know, like we don't have formal relationships with the hospitals. So when they ask us specific questions about how we are helping people with their physical health and wellness, we can write down what the county is doing, we can write down what those other agencies are working on, we can write down what the hospitals are working on with all their incredible health initiatives. However, if we don't have them at the table, we can't get points for it. You know, so like, it's, it's a competition against the entire nation for funding, so it's very important to make sure that every person is represented. And of course, it's a regional equity. So I think there's 120 towns in McLean. Why are there only homeless service providers in Bloomington Normal? When we count every year how many individuals are currently living on the streets, why do we only walk the streets of Bloomington and Normal? Why are we not working with the smaller villages and towns whose rural definition of homelessness is completely different? So one of the things that we're working on is that there is not a true representation of how many people are experiencing homelessness in McLean County. So we walk the streets because the federal government tells us to in January, which is horrible for cold weather states, and we count. Last year, I think we had a couple hundred in shelters and about 50 on the streets, but we only measured two towns. And what rural homelessness looks like is totally different. So we're trying to do a point-in-time count. In the summer, we're working with multiple agencies in Chicago who built a formula. I have dyscalculia, so numbers and I are not always friends, but on the point-in-time count that we submitted to Congress, I think the state of Illinois had 12,000 or 1,200 individuals who are experiencing homeless, literal street homelessness. However, through the coordinated efforts of agencies in Chicago, they estimated that 65,000 people in Chicago alone are experiencing homelessness on a given day. So we are advocating for a change in the point-in-time, point-in-time count process and trying to get better data. The data that we collect directly impacts every person who is trying to address housing and homelessness. They get their data from us. If we don't have the best data, how are we supposed to advocate for the best change? So it's a lot. How can you participate? Because that's a lot, and not all this might be your wheelhouse. So we recently conscripted the McLean Housing, McLean County Housing Coalition to be a local representation of the COC. What does that mean? So although we are an 11-county body that meets bimonthly, the decisions about priorities for the continuum are made at the local level. So we have representation, we have not yet elected someone from McLean to be the local representation, which means that although there are service providers that are board members for McLean, there is not one person that is carrying the vote for McLean County that this is important for us, this is what we want our funding to do, this is what the policies and procedures look like for us. So because that local hub body where the decisions are made at the McLean County level and then taken to the COC, there has not been an equitable representation across all 11 counties, and we need that. So this local body is going to be where we make our decisions, where we strategize to prevent and end homelessness for our community based on the unique needs. Every county doesn't have to do the same thing the same way. There are policies that all 11 counties will have to follow. This includes, you know, like, everything. Like, we follow the state and federal government guidelines, and then we set our own policies and procedures, and every individual who is providing services has to follow those policies or we take their funding and give it to someone who will. So we need accurate representation of what is the need for McLean County. So two, we have the COC boards. There is a minimum of 15 people that are supposed to serve, at least one representing each county and then each sector that we service. So domestic violence, a person with lived experience, mental health, substance abuse. You know, like, really, we need individuals who represent a certain market. We do not have anyone on our board who represents housing initiatives, who are actually trying to develop and build things, get things off the ground. It's, it's a lot of strategy, the board. I answer to the board, but I'm the planner. I'm the one that designs the strategy for the COC. I'm the one that tells them, hey, these are the projects that we're going to work on, and they're the ones that we try to help me make it happen. So it's a lot of effort. Subcommittees. On the local level, we need ad hoc and sustainable committees. So two of the things that are going to impact you directly and your neighbors who are unhoused and your service providers are the rank and review and the coordinated entry. Rank and review is where we decide who gets funding and who gets how much. Agencies that are receiving funding, whether through ESG, homelessness prevention, Home Illinois Rapid Rehousing, or Permanent Supportive Housing, or Shelter Diversion, they cannot vote on who's getting funding, right? But historically, the only people who are participating on this level are the ones that are receiving funding. So we are trying to create a really equitable competition process at the local level, making sure that agencies and individuals and governments and local towns are aware of what's happening, because we've never had like a truly fair competition. So we need people to help determine those policies and procedures for identifying and creating the process for making sure that we get the best money to the best agency possible. And then coordinated entry. Coordinated entry is currently housed at PATH. It is essentially limited case management for those who don't have access to it for all 11 counties. But if someone is experiencing homelessness, their first step is to enter the coordinated entry process, where they are put onto a by-name list. We keep track of their names. The last time we contacted them, we have to contact them at least once a month. If we can't find them, we use our agencies to look in the streets to go and find them. But it keeps track of how long the person has been experiencing homelessness, but the risks, the risk factor is what types of housing programs they might be applicable for. Every single housing program is first required to pull from the coordinated entry priority list. But it is a fractured system that is barely hanging on and is not truly serving McLean County as it truly needs to be. If you have anyone that you've tried to help get services, you will notice that we don't exactly know what to do, because we've been granted a historic system that no longer reflects what is needed in our community, and it is our clients who are struggling with homelessness that are suffering from that. Strategy. So you might not necessarily know any of the other things that I talked about or have any interest in them, but I can bet you have some life experiences in implementing projects, in working collectively as a group, in working with government, in working with private sectors individuals, that I don't have a lot of experience in the private sector. So how to get those agencies working together, how to actually implement and find the processes, have the methodologies and the data, everything that we do is evidence-based. So having people who are experienced with sociology and all sorts of different things, like, we need those minds, even if you aren't a service provider, to be at the table to help us think outside the box. So there are a very limited amount of service providers, and we all have full caseloads. We need help. We need our community's help if you want us to help you. Lived experience. If you have ever experienced homelessness in your life, it is required that we have a person with lived experience in every single subcommittee. We have a subcommittee for youth, we have a subcommittee for policy and procedure, we have a subcommittee for domestic violence. These subcommittees are where things are voted on. This is where the power comes from, the community is getting to decide what they want. We want to make sure that a person with lived experience is chiming in. If you look at a lot of the service board meetings about how to end homelessness in our community, persons with lived experience are not there. And if they are, they are not self-disclosing. So we need someone on our board, and we need every, someone in all of our subcommittees. We also have a lived experience advisory board that we're creating, where individuals who are currently or have recently experienced homelessness will be given a stipend to volunteer and participate in their time. And our last thing that I could definitely use help with is identifying who is missing from my table. from my table, whose voice is not represented in the continuum of care, because it's not my job to end homelessness in my community, it's to help all of you and homelessness in your community. So identifying who has the skills and resources, and the ability to think outside the box, and bring a different lens than we have as human service providers, we need that. So, don't hesitate. You might think that you don't know anything, but guess what, I think does the rest of us. So we're all figuring it out together. So Joan Hartman is not here, I can say that she is the most incredible supervisor I've ever had in my entire life. So I did bring in Versari from the Center for Human Services, we'll go over that, but one thing that's not listed in here is our Recovery Support Center, or Recovery Community Center. It's rather stable, yours can take one of those, pass it out if you know anyone. On there, you will see RAP, that is Wellness Recovery Action Plan. If you have anyone that would like to learn how to build a recovery plan with their clients, that is something you can sign up for for free. But this is open to the community, you do not have to be a client. It's a place where you can not use, and experience something, there's all types of groups, like free yoga, and there's a book club, all sorts of things that are open to anyone in the community, you do not have to be someone who is experiencing substance misuse to participate or be in recovery. So at the Center for Human Services, so that is where my organization is housed, that's where the COC comes out of, however, they're completely different than me. I work there, but we are completely separate. So we have a rapid rehousing and a permanent supportive housing program through the Home Illinois Grants, where we successfully have a ton of people in the last year since receiving that funding. We have an outreach, unhoused outreach specialist, that's been doing a great job at getting people into housing, and it's super incredible. So I oversee and I monitor them, and I make sure that they're following policies and procedures, but I don't have any direct input into how they function. So we also have permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing mental health or disabilities, long-term housing, there's a more independent apartment building, and then there's the roaming house, where people can come and live, and it's a pretty awesome program, and it's mental health stuff. So, we do have outpatient counseling services, so we are CCPHC, my brain is tired, so please don't ask me what that is, a community, something behavioral health center, there's two here in town, the Center for Human Services and Chestnut. So we have outpatient services for those that are on Medicaid and Medicare, but also who have private insurance as well. So we have two different sectors for that. We do a lot of youth outreach services, we're involved in the juvenile justice, which is super awesome, brand new to us. We have a first-episode psychosis program, which is brand new to McLean County. Kayla Weiss is the one that is kind of heading that up, I think they've only had, like, a few clients since they started in the last couple of months. It's a program I don't know a whole lot about, but it's basically early intervention for someone who has no idea what's going on, and starts experiencing psychosis, and helps them walk through that to get connected to services. So we have 24/7 crisis services, our mobile crisis unit to access that after hours, if you're getting out at the gas station, you say someone freaked out, you can call two-in-one, and that will directly connect them to, you can ask for the mobile crisis, they visit emergency rooms, and other places, helping people with immediate interventions for mental health crises. We have what we call the BHAC, the Behavioral Health Urgent Care. It's a program that was formerly at McLean County itself, through the Triage Program, it functions a little bit different. It's not just a hangout spot, you can't just come there and, like, chill. But, I don't think that ours are listed here, my apologies, I forgot to bring those. If someone needs intervention, and is experiencing some type of crisis, and they don't feel comfortable going to the emergency room, but they know that they need help for a mental health struggle, they can come into a living room-type environment, meet one-on-one with counselors and support. And one of the things that I love about a BHAC versus, like, an emergency room, is that there's follow-up care. I can't remember how many months it is, but they try to walk alongside you to make sure that, once you experience the crisis, that you aren't just set on your own to figure it out, because trust in me, that is a horrible way to do it. We, of course, have psychiatric services, and a recovery center pairs very well with our recovery services. Joan Hartman is actually a professor at Heartland, she implemented the Recovery Support Specialist Program, I'm actually a graduate of that program, that helps build peers, and we're implementing, essentially, every human sector needs a peer recovery support specialist, that they need someone who is like them, who has walked through what they have walked through, and able, in order to help them get out of whatever is keeping them trapped, and from living a functional life, into being completely reintegrated back into society. So recovery is a huge focus, and there's a million different ways to get involved with recovery at the Center for Human Services. So there's a lot that happens within my agency. I know that was a ton of information, I don't know how concise it was, so who has questions?
Questions for me? You might have said it, and I might have missed it. Any idea how many are experiencing homelessness here in McLean County?
So we're actually working on that right now, we're in our point-in-time count season this week, ends tomorrow, I'll probably have more demographic data on Monday. So far, we've identified, I think, 30 individuals who are living in the encampments, and I'm not quite sure how many are in the shelters, or are in, if you're in rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing, you're considered housed. But there are some of the other services, such as, like, Bright Point, Crisis Nursery, like, their organization has a few projects, and then Project Oz has one as well. So I'm not quite sure, last year, we had 45 individuals living on the streets, and then several hundred in shelters. So I'm actually not quite sure, but it's not an accurate representation. Last year, the data that we had, that we would need to build 140 or 50 more units to even house all the people that were living on the streets. So although we can only find about 50 of them every January, that doesn't mean that they don't exist. So that's one of the reasons we're trying to build a formula, and get more accurate data in the summertime, because we can get more accurately repolished what's happening. People tend to hunker down in some weird places that are harder to find in the winter. I will send out more data as soon as I get it next week.
Other questions for me? For sources of your funding, is it primarily federally funded, or is there any, like, state, local funding, city?
We have multiple funding sources, primarily, like, our largest pool of funding is, of course, through the COC program that's federal, but the Home Illinois that covers shelter diversion, which is for that category two homeless, to keep them from having to go to shelter, rapid rehousing, and permanent supportive housing, and homelessness prevention, are all state programs that are not federal pass-throughs. I think the Emergency Solutions Grant, that covers, like, shelter and street outreach, and a rapid rehousing component as well, that might be a federal pass-through. We also coordinate, you know, with public housing authorities, with housing choice vouchers, and, like, priority for that, and then work with ETH and EFST, so we don't administer those funding sources, those street funding sources, but we coordinate with them.
Any other questions? Liam, thank you so much for presenting today, also for you, Stafford, and filling in for Joe.
Yes, I'm okay.
Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission today?
If I may just quickly introduce our two staff members. We have, let's see, one of our assistant planners, and he's Jake, what is that, Prebassure?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you introduce yourself, and then also we have a new planning intern, who turns in from ISU, and then I have Alec, Alec Blue, right? Just wanted to try to get all the pronunciation correct. So if you don't mind, both of you introduce yourselves.
Yes, my name is Jake Versari, I'm an assistant planner at MTRPC, actually just moved here last month for this job from San Diego, California, so getting used to the town, getting used to the winter, it's been a lot of adjustment, but it's been really great so far, and, you know, really interesting to see all the plans that we have going on, and the changes that it's undergoing, so, yeah. Nice to meet you guys, it was a really interesting presentation.
Thank you.
I'm Alec Mudra, I'm the new student intern, like Ray said, from Illinois State, and I'm excited to do my first experience with planning. Thanks for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else before the commission, come before the commission today? It's not an entertaining motion to adjourn? Second? Although it's a favor, so if you're saying aye, I oppose same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you again for being here today. Same for us.
This conference is no longer being recorded.